Discussions and deliberations today, of course, we all own our community groups as well. So we'll open the meeting at twelve noon sharp and we'll bring Mr. Korczynski's overview of today's activities.
Thanks, Your Worship. So just a couple of items to note for council as we work through our first full draft budget meeting. Administration and council today. So as always, the process doesn't start today. Administration starts this process in September where we start to gather the budget to arrive at this date. So lots of work has already gone into the process again to today. And really today, what we're looking to do is is work through, get some direction from council. More so at a high level, not necessarily a line by line level, which will set administration up to begin to work forward on the budget. So just in terms of our strategy, you know, same strategy we employ traditionally, which is really we take a zero based approach to the budget. So every line item starts at zero and we build it out from there. So there's no assumptions made with the budget. Everything is fact based based on the operation. Accountability for money and focus on value for money are always top of mind. I said this in the past, we really treat the municipal budget like it's our own personal finances. So there's there's nothing in the budget that council is going to see that we don't believe we require for operations. That doesn't mean it can't be taken out, but there's nothing in the budget that's a nice to have. Results for tax dollars as always, service excellence is always part of the budget process. And the budget you're going to see today really reflects that. There's been no cuts to services or programming within the current budget. That doesn't mean there's work we have to do, but there's been nothing targeted for a reduction at this point in time. As always, we look for non taxation revenue opportunities so it doesn't go on the levy. Then finally, you know, obviously capital is in the budget. Council will see today the capital is extremely limited, obviously with the active living center being completely top of mind. And really will absorb our capital budget with respect to moving forward if we're successful. So really, you know, in terms of the strategy today, council is going to see a budget that was very similar to 2024. Realistically, we're targeting likely a five to six percent tax increase based on the current budget, which is not in line with the rest of Ontario. Our comparison across Ontario is that that's where most municipalities are landing is in that five percent range. In terms of some of the budget results, we did a public survey as always. Just a couple of highlights for council. I had approximately a hundred responses online, which isn't usual, pardon, which isn't unusual. Some of the priorities ranked highest by the community, recreation and quality of life, core services and infrastructure and safety and emergency management. Most important municipal services, again, mostly infrastructure based, waters, sewer, roads, recreation. And this year, one that traditionally isn't as high as it was this year was economic development growth, which I think is speaks to what we're seeing in the community and maybe feeling in terms of what the future looks like. In terms of, you know, the question was asked, which of the following options would you prefer for property tax increases? And the majority of responses was, you know, maintain property tax increases with inflationary increases included, which obviously is the budget that we're talking about today. And then finally, you know, how important is investing in new infrastructure? Very important and somewhat important, ranked very high as opposed to not important. And then how important is it to maintain the town's current infrastructure centered mostly around recreation? And that was very important. So the budget you're going to see today, I think, very much reflects a lot of the thoughts that came through the the community process with respect to the budget. So today, just to finalize before back over to the mayor, we want to get direction on our operational budget with respect to, you know, what type of tax increase we're looking at generally. Obviously, it doesn't have to be finalized today, but it gives administration good direction to move forward. We would like to finalize the capital budget, which is limited. And then finally, of course, you know, we don't approve the final budget until April. The reason being is the federal and provincial governments fiscal year ends are the end of March. We must align our finances with those. So generally, mid-April is our target to get back to council with respect to the operating budget. So with that, back to you, Your Worship, and we'll take you down.
Well, great. Thanks for that overview. And as council is fully aware, and the council of Julianne is obviously into the process. And there's two councils that participate to get knowledge in regards to how the municipal governance and budgeting process works. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Korczynski? We'll get into that. And the budget binder has been handed out earlier. So there's an opportunity to go through it and look at and see if there are any comments or questions. We'll do that once you get into the actual budget process. But today, we're going to have our delegations, the various groups within the municipality that are coming to request funds to offset the operations of their their activities throughout the year for 2025. So with that being said, since there's no question, Mr. Korczynski, I think we've had a quick overview of what the process is and we're fully aware of that. And if the Marathon Public Library is willing to get started a little earlier, we'd more likely like to fly you down. Maybe get everybody out here earlier today if that's possible, if there are groups available. So we're at twelve fifteen. We're about ten minutes ahead of schedule. So are you okay to come down earlier? Awesome. So whether the reps are going to come down to do the presentation, I'm sure they'll be all coming down.
Hannah's going to present. I'm just here for questions.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Your Worship, Councilor Lake will be here approximately around one thirty. He has to teach a class and then he'll, once he finishes that, he'll be over.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Everybody's got your handle here for them or in the chat. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Your Worship, councillors and staff. I'm Hannah Demers, Chair of the Marathon Public Library Board. And please present to council today the 2025 budget and 2024 yearly report on behalf of the library staff. The library has seen significant growth in use, growth in usage, including increased visitation, program attendance and active cardholders. It also has been recognized for excellence in service, winning the Not-for-Profit Excellence Award from the Chamber of Commerce, nominated and voted on by our community members. In 2024, the Marathon Public Library had eleven thousand library visits, which is an increase of nearly three thousand visits over 2023. Programming attendance decreased by nearly five hundred, while active cardholders grew by almost fifty. Ninety-seven hundred items were checked out. This includes both our physical and e-resources. Our library is becoming an increasingly vital community hub with new demands for services and resources. Additionally, the closure of a local school library has resulted in four classes now regularly visiting the public library, further strengthening our resources. We've been actively working to engage the community and secure sponsorships to support our programming. Bear Gold sponsored the purchase of our three D printer, which has been used to create a variety of community requested items like fidgets, dragons, blizzards, cribbage pieces and so many cookie cutters. NFMC, IG Wealth and Crosswear Video sponsored our summer reading program. And jigsaw puzzles and memory kits were added to our collection with the generous donations from the community and the partnership with the Alzheimer Society. These sponsorships have allowed us to expand our offerings, but they're not enough to fully meet the needs of our growing library community. We're also seeking funding to hire an outreach coordinator through the Young Canada Works internship program. This person would focus on building relationships with local schools, First Nations communities and the town to help coordinate events such as Canada Day, Winter Fest. This position would also help the library expand its outreach, increasing our visibility and strengthening our role as a community anchor. We're submitting this budget request to increase the annual operating budget of the Marathon Public Library from one hundred and seventy thousand to two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. This request stems from the fact that our current budget has not kept pace with inflation or the increasing demand for library services. Without this budget increase, many of our programs, services and resources that our community rely on will be at risk. Our current budget of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars when adjusted for inflation does not reflect the true cost of maintaining and expanding library services. For example, the nineteen ninety-four budget in twenty twenty-four dollars would be equivalent to one hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. While the twenty twenty-four budget was at one hundred and seventy thousand. If we were to adjust the nineteen ninety-four budget for inflation to represent twenty twenty-four dollars, it would be worth two hundred and eighty thousand. This means that over the past thirty years, our budget has increased only about fifteen thousand dollars, despite inflation eroding the purchasing power of those funds. The gap between the nineteen ninety-four budget adjusted for inflation and our current budget is approximately one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Without an increase to two hundred and fourteen, the library will not be able to meet growing demands or replace aging technology and resources. If we don't receive the requested budget increase, we'll face significant challenges that could negatively impact the library's ability to serve the community. Without sufficient funds, we will not be able to maintain and expand our collection. Essential resources like books, e-resources, craft and supplies and memory kits will become increasingly difficult to acquire as well as maintain. We will be unable to sustain the tech reserve funds required under our memorandum of understanding with the Town of Marathon. This puts at risk the ability to replace outdated public access computers and other critical technology. Without additional funding, we may also be forced to reduce business hours, including eliminating weekend hours, which would limit public access to library services. We've already had to scale back our e-resource offerings. Libby and Hoopla are two very popular platforms. Libby charges the flat annual rate and there is no borrow limitations on our users. But Hoopla has borrowing, we've had to reduce their borrowing limits due to funding constraints as they charge per borrow. They've already reduced borrows from six per month to four, and users have expressed frustration and not being able to access content due to these limits. The requested increase of forty-four thousand dollars is crucial for the library to continue serving the community and expanding our services. Without this increase, many of the core services that our residents depend on, collection maintenance, technology, e-resources and outreach programs will be severely impacted. We remain committed to supporting the needs of our community while also exploring cost cutting measures where possible. We respectfully request your consideration and approval of this budget increase to ensure the Marathon Public Library can continue to thrive and meet the growing needs of our community. Thank you.
Good. Excuse me. Great. Thanks for that overview of the year presentation. I'll ask council if you have any questions of the library board.
No questions, but I have a comment. Just thank you for your presentation and your delegation today. With the messaging, I think we're all kind of accustomed here of rural Ontario of working, doing more with less. So I just want to say you guys have a great team going on and everything that you guys have provided to the community in the last twelve months with events, activities, all of that stuff has been highly recognized. And I think you guys, both executive and staff are doing a phenomenal job in-house. And yeah, just wanted to acknowledge the great work you guys are doing as a team.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have any questions? I had a couple in regards to the, I mean, obviously, as Councilor Valance identified, you know, your group, your board and your employees are doing a great job of trying to reach out to the community for various other sources of income. That's a big factor, I think, as you heard from Chief Administrator of Office, Mr. Korczynski. We're looking at a five to six percent increase based on just the standard numbers that were presented. And that standard number for the library was one seventy. So we have to take into consideration your increased request is going to be with the other groups as well. We'll have to go through that. So of course, we're not going to get an adjective. We're going to discuss that. But you know, you may have mentioned about the hoop of fees and that, you know, they charge back to the library board. Is there an opportunity to ask the participants who are you guys in that service to have a fee charged to them, offset their fee costs? I don't know exactly how it works, but.
So that's not something we can charge for according to the Public Libraries Act. What are I have, I'm off work currently, but I have our staff working with local businesses to see if there's maybe some businesses that want to sponsor. Maybe have a different sponsor each month or something. So we're looking at offsetting that amount in whatever way we're able. It's quite expensive. It's costing us right now about three hundred and fifty per month, depending on on where numbers flow. But that's about our average. And in January, we actually cut our borrow limit down already to try to keep it a little more in line with where we're at.
And they're both very different. They offer different things. So one is, they both offer ebooks and audiobooks. The one offers newspapers and magazines and the other one offers television shows, comic books.
Movies.
Yeah. So it's.
And we find very, very different patrons that use one or the other. There's only very few that ultimately use both.
So I guess as I was getting at, I didn't know the actual what uses what part of the system. But the reality is the people who come in utilizing your systems are going away with free streaming services in general. And you know, you're compensating for that, right? It's not that you don't want to compensate, but it's an opportunity to generate some revenue by those users. Because if we all stream at home, we're paying twelve, fifteen, twenty bucks per streaming device within our systems, right? So what I'm getting at is there's an opportunity to charge back to the partners and under the act you're saying no.
And we do, so we do charge any visitors. So if there's people camping or anything, we do charge those people for a library card. And part of the way we came up with that amount is using, basically, if they maxed out their their borrows, how much would that cost? We took that into account when coming up with our price for for that visitors to town. But it is one of the core services for library that we're, according to the act, we can't can't charge for.
Well, honestly, I think, you know, as we used to be participating, we're much more invested in the library boards and the activities we removed ourselves. But you're doing a great job in regards to operating that services, providing the things within the community. I've been there many times for programming, so there's lots of things happening. But again, as we move forward, we have to consider what the what the budgets look like for not only the library, but all the all the organizations within the community as well as the municipality. And things are not getting any easier, but that'll be discussion. We'll definitely get into the budget process. And we'll see what we can come up with as a suitable recommendation back to your organization. So once again, thanks for coming in. Have a glad good reception.
Yeah, just industry within libraries and stuff like that. Do you find clients are more so going hard copy? Or are you finding more of your patrons are accessing that ebook, the e-reader type of?
We have lots of both. Yeah, I don't have exact stats in front of me, which how many get resources versus the physical copies. But there's there's lots that'll only use one, lots that'll only use the other. And then there's some that use both, obviously. But so there's, we've got lots of patrons that we never actually see come into the library because they're using that, the e-resources. Or rarely come in. I shouldn't say never come in, but that we'll see less often.
That's what you have. Well, thank you. I've been on the library board for a lot of years over the years and it's great to see it going well. And I sure hear the financial strain that you're under. The one question that popped into my mind as you were doing the presentation is about Holy Savior using programs. Do we ask the schools for any donation? Like, you know, there must be some saving for closing down your library and bringing your kids over to the public library. Is there any expectation of the schools that are using our library for programming?
That's not something I've looked into yet. Yeah, so I couldn't answer. Yeah, I wouldn't have an answer today for.
Well, just some of the big savings to close, I mean, they eliminated staff.
Yeah. And we also, the school boards also changed their budgetings. There used to be a line that was specific to libraries, but they removed that line and just put that funding in with everything else. So they don't have funding that's specific to libraries anymore. So that goes also into their their regular.
But when they're there, you become their staff. Good point.
Just to inform the council, when we transitioned pre-pandemic to post-pandemic, there was an agreement that we were okay with having the board get the honorarium. They did it for one year, but for the last two years, the board members of the library have forgotten to get their annual honorarium.
Well, thank you for that and thank the board members for that as well.
And it's not a missed budget, I agree.
And it was recommended, I think, was one of those things that we could be trying to attract more people who take time away from their workplace to come on board to have a small conversation. It was something you're going to get rich off of, or you could maybe buy a cup of cups of coffee a month. Reality was just the recognition of that. So it's good to consider that you removed it based on your budget constraints. But if anybody else has anything else, we'll debate this through our process. And thank you for your presentation and all the best.
Okay.
Thanks. You may walk with the ground if you want, or you can just take off for the rest of the afternoon. Thanks. I know you all have time and work, so I appreciate it. So Cross Country Ski Club, good to go. Great. Good afternoon.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Mitchell.
Good afternoon.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So it was yours, sir.
If I can see that. So good afternoon, everyone. For those who may not know me, my name's Mitchell Hatton. I'm sure everyone knows who I am. I am the Marathon Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club President for the twenty twenty four, twenty five season. Before I begin, I would like to thank Your Worship, Mary Dumis, municipal councillors and CAO Daryl Skorczynski for allowing us to appear on today's agenda. For anyone who may not know what the MCCSSC does, we were officially established on December second, nineteen eighty-seven. So we've been around for a while. We are a not-for-profit volunteer run organization. Our club is home to fifteen kilometers of trails that go through the boreal forests. And five kilometers of those trails are actually lit for night skiing. And we also have five kilometers of snowshoe trails, offer beautiful views of Lake Superior. And one of them, I'm pretty sure it's close to what people call the Mill Mountain. You can almost see right over top. So you get a really nice view up there. This year, the MCCSSC held our annual general meeting on November twenty first, twenty twenty four. As an not-for-profit volunteer run organization, we solely run on volunteers for our executive and all of our club operations, whether it's grooming or opening the chalet on weeknights or weekends. This year, we welcomed four new members to our team, Hillary and James Carlos, Linda Brier and Elena Vanderfort. At the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four season, we said farewell to a few of our directors, Amy Mackey, Jennifer Mathrell Potter and Paul Mishdicks. On behalf of the club, I would just like to thank them for their contributions to not only our club, but to the community as a whole. Although the twenty-three, twenty-four season may have been short due to the weather, the MCCSSC volunteers were busy behind the scenes. We completed the replacement of the Blue Trail lighting shed with support from the Town of Marathon. Our snowshoe trail clearance and revitalization project, which included the brushing and rerouting of the Panoramic Trail due to the east-west transformation line, as well as the replacement and installation of directional signage. We replaced three trail lights from the old original lights to LED lighting. We continue to work on our ski trails, including brushing and signage maintenance. We became an official member of Superior Country, which promotes tourism in Northern Ontario. And we also began the investigation and planning stages of the Red Trail Bridge replacement and Vortex Loop revitalization. So as we look to a shorter twenty-four, twenty-five season, the club has set a number of goals to achieve. Our executive goals this season are to, first and foremost, grow our membership numbers, increase volunteer recruitment and retention, restart the youth club ski lessons on Saturday afternoons, which started this Saturday and was a huge success. We had way more people than what we were expecting. Focus on increasing marketing, tourism and fundraising, and continue to pursue the Red Trail Bridge replacement and Vortex Loop revitalization. So as you can see, COVID may have been a little good to us in twenty twenty. Our membership stats actually peaked. But since then, due to the shorter seasons, we've declined quite a bit. And those season memberships are what we rely on to keep operating throughout the season. So over the next five years, we strive to achieve an increase in club visibility, like I said, through marketing and tourism, grow season membership to a goal of eighty or more members, continue fundraising for major purchases such as a replacement of our garage roof, Red Trail Bridge and Vortex Loop revitalization project, and the replacement of the nineteen ninety-seven Bombing Groomer. The club also seeks to introduce large annual community events, complete the bridge project, and lastly, explore club expansion into other services. Throughout the twenty-three, twenty-four season, the club volunteers provided over one thousand, one hundred hours of volunteer power. These hours included in this calculation are from weekday chalet attendants, groomer operators, trail maintenance, executive members, fundraising and special event coordinators and workers. Although our club is strictly volunteer driven, we continue to have strong professional partnerships with other organizations, not only locally, but throughout the country. The club has and will continue to work towards creating more partnerships with community organizations to further the development of programs and services for residents of Marathon, Vitugong Nishnabik and Epizagomak Nishnabik. As the Marathon Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club operates solely on revenue received from fundraising donations, seasonal memberships, rentals and trail passes, the shorter winter seasons and decrease of members have placed strain on our operations. In twenty twenty-four, the Town of Marathon graciously provided the club with a ten thousand dollar contribution from the MAT Tax Fund. Today, on behalf of the club, I would like to ask Your Worship and council to consider a continuation of financial support in the amount of ten thousand dollars to aid our club. In addition to this, we are also asking for some possible support around grant applications and fulfillment of those applications that may be out there as our club is quite small and we don't exactly have the manpower to to put those through. And maybe some logistical support on the Red Trail Bridge project, which is quite a large project for us to take on. If there is any questions, I would be happy to answer them and thank you for listening to our presentation.
Great. Thanks for that, Mitchell. It's quite a lot of work in volunteers and done at the Cross Country Ski Club, which has been for a better part of maybe three decades. So thanks for that. Anybody have any questions, Mitchell, in regards to the presentation?
Just to comment, to see the club revitalizing itself that last winter was terrible and I was well aware of that. And I happened to be there on Saturday. I'm the cooking guy, the family cook. And it was flowing away. There, I think there were sixteen kids. Each of them had at least one parent with them. So it was packed in there and people were having a great time. And I really want to thank James and Hillary for taking the leadership on the lessons starting back up. So thanks to you and all the volunteers.
Thank you. And I forgot to mention James and Hillary. Well, Hillary actually, on their own time and dime, went to Thunder Bay to become certified to make sure that we were able to offer those lessons this year. So a huge asset to our club.
Awesome. Anybody else? So as you know, as I said to the previous group, we've considered in as part of the budget request, obviously, the MAT Tax makes a good leisure for us to identify the groups within the community. And we look at those budgets for continuation of putting support back into the community. And your group has done a great job in volunteers. It was wonderful. So thanks for that and thanks for your hard work. We'll definitely look at it and I'm sure you can have conversations, Mr. Korczynski and Mr. Perez around some assistance around the the application processes for grants as well as the restructured bridge trail system for the bridge. I'm sure it's a lot more to take on for a bunch of volunteers than it is for certified engineers and technical people. So I'm sure you can have this conversation. We'll see what we can do with that. So thanks for your time and thanks to your group for making that facility run again for the year.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Mr. Collins, you're good to go.
Yep.
Awesome. Come on down.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Fair. Rick Dumis and the councillors, everybody seems to know me and Jim Collins, President of the Marathon District Historical Society Museum. In two thousand and twenty-four, for the first time, the museum was open for extended hours and some weekends. Due to hiring of three summer students, one up from the previous year. We were open to visitors from June twenty-fifth to October eleventh. We provided tours. To individual, individuals or groups on request, we're often open during, we're also open during special occasions like the winter. Winter, at best last year, where we served hot chocolate with the help of Ryan's book. We continue to support the other community groups who have requested use of the facility, like the group of seven, the Trail Association, the Marathon, the Marathon Guide Group and the Marathon Scout Group. Currently, we have a great display of scout uniforms from the early nineteen fifty's to today. We intend to participate where we can for the upcoming winter festival. With the uh with the open time increasing by thirty percent, thirty-three percent, we had a large increase in visitors. Uh six hundred and thirty-seven signatures in the logbook up from four hundred and twenty-two in twenty twenty-three for an increase of fifty-one percent. Uh after now was after the uh museum was closed for the season, we continue to have visitors uh for our winter events and group tours, which increased with additional one hundred thirty-seven people. Um bringing in the yearly total of seven hundred and seventy-four. Uh our our visitors were originated from five different countries, Canada, US, uh Scotland and Mexico, with the furthest one being from Australia. I think there's a couple groups in Australia. It uh are the numbers, the US states increased from ten to twenty in in the in the in the this year. Uh with the furthest from uh Fendickin uh Florida. And uh we had eight provinces in Canada represent representative. We we continue to have numerous requests looking for historical information on Marathon and District, which we have fulfilled through via email. Uh we also continue to receive historical artifacts donated by individuals from far and near. Uh our volunteer hours uh dawn is estimated at seven hundred to eight hundred volunteer hours per year we we have. We didn't have that in the write-up because anyway, so. Uh as mentioned, uh there last year during the two thousand twenty-three, we moved our historical uh artifacts previously stored at the former visitors information center on Highway Two, a storage area provided by the Town Marathon at the Lakeview Community Center. Two thousand twenty-four, the town helped us relocate the artifacts to a new location within the uh Lakeview Community Center, basically the ceramic room. Large and heavy uh artifacts were not moved at this time. Also, last year, our student staff organized the backroom in our museum and the storage area at the Lakeview Community Center. We still have more work to do there. We are, we we are again requesting a funding of fifteen thousand dollars. We uh we have we have not asked for an increase in for many years uh for twenty twenty-five to continue the operation of the Marathon Museum, support our projects and assistance of the uh summer students. Some of the activities that we that benefit from this funding will be the museum building operation. Uh includes insurance, utilities, hydro, telephone, internet, capital purchases, the 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 society budget for additional uh replacement computers. We purchased one last year and we and and require one more as the uh existing old one is quite old. We cannot update it. Uh student uh employment for two for three months. No, for three students for sixteen uh weeks during the year, starting in the May twenty-five. That's what we 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 plan to do this year. Uh as in the past years, we have applied for funding through the Young Canada Works and Canada Summer Jobs Programs. It was realized in twenty twenty-four that we uh employees that we were able to be with with the with the permanent tree uh place, we we were able to open up the public to more hours, conduct more presentations to visitors and and the residents in in Marathon District, more research and work on additional exhibits. These students uh support the smooth functioning of the day-to-day operation of the museum during the summer, focusing on customer service and to ensure that the visitors uh experience a friendly and curious and informative visit. Some visitors' comments that we have from twenty twenty-four was one with best explanation of the local history ever from Parker. And Parker was great, ve- very interesting. It's comments that people left in the book. There was more, but anyway. They also, they wrote, they, our students were also responsible for researching, writing and formatting brochures and articles for Mercury, uh Mercury and and our website, which uh describes key events in the history of the town of the area. In addition, they will continue to through scanning and archiving of the historical images, uh documents and other records of the area. They will also be supporting the board with fundraising activity initiatives such as barbecues and and raffles to support supplement the funding from the town. This this summer, our our students staff worked on several projects for uh for outreach to our local community. Was organized a an event for the residents of the Lakeview Manor, uh the Peninsula Manor. Anyway, uh placed uh multiple uh posters around the town that helped advertise our museum, made uh had a survey for visitors to uh share their experience with this QR code uh posted on the door. Yeah, the Barrick Hemlo uh personnel approached us about uh starting the project to for on the uh on the basically for the uh Barrick uh Hemlo exist uh exhibit. This project was uh started in twenty twenty-four with the Parker Bell with the uh the charge of, put in charge of of gathering information and working with uh Hemlo, uh Barrick Hemlo and will be so, which will be celebrating a fortieth anniversary in this this year. Another interesting one was that we had a request from the former people of town on some some medical nursing in Marathon uh since forty-six, we uh put it. Uh this this was a suggestion by Catherine Bastido, Dr. Bastido's daughter. Dr. Bastido established a long-term this this position, practiced in Marathon after his service in the Canadian Armed Forces during World War Two. One interesting fact that uh we 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 found out was that early in the uh polio epidemic in the nineteen fifty's, Dr. Bastido was able to acquire enough vaccine to vaccinate everybody in Marathon. It's the first, it was the first mass one, mass vaccination. Uh the the veteran squared sinetaph of plaques after refurbishing and this was in conjunction with the museum with the Elysian, uh after refurbishing and memorial plaques were placed at the veteran squared sinetaph before Memorial State twenty twenty-four. One was for the Ontario Paper Company Veterans, the second for the Marathon Branch One Eighty-Three of Canadian Legion in memory of all the uh Canadian War Dead. Uh those ones could continue working on our permanent recognition for Dick Frye and and Stan Johnson, our past presidents and and museum leader to be completed this year. We have one, uh permanent recognition for the Minnesota donors to to be completed this year. Uh last year, we we talked a bit about the Colin McMillan uh book from Cape Breton to Northwestern Ontario Rec- Collects- Recollections of Bush Pilot and Bush the mechanic and 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 tourists out there. Uh sales of this book is are brisk and slow down in Marathon and we're we'll be we'll be attempting to restock from the uh North Northwestern Ontario Aviation Heritage Center in Thunder Bay. Glenn From Douglas Photography, we continue to collaborate with the family for exhibit and publication of Glenn's uh historical pictures. John Srednitski uh book shows were a problem. We uh uh co- we cooperated with the family to have the book available for sale at the museum. This book uh contains lots of interesting stories based on John's leg experiences and growing up in the Moberne Marathon area, world tour experience and and the history of marathons and 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 district. There's some really interesting uh, it makes real interesting reading this book. I, you could, you could tell you womanizer. Uh the great new merit, uh Marathon sign, the large one that was uh created by the local arts artisan has been um has been on display inside the museum. This year, we will, we will be placing a sign on the outside, east outside the wall of the museum. The Group of Seven Trail Association, we continue to work with this association to distribute trail information. Uh work with the historical aspect of the Group of Seven painting sites around Marathon. We 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 plan to uh uh create a new exhibit based on this group as well as we will be assisting them with their being their base of operation for the summer. Uh the operation, we stock rate the webcam, we we put a new webcam camera in and and twenty twenty-three. Uh we continue to operate this webs, uh this webcam, providing a view of the of the Superior Harbor for the for our website and that which has many monthly, monthly views. Uh Farm in Canada also uh accessed it to monitor current conditions, which were malemated in, malcomated in the provincial records regarding fog, lake effect, snow and then more. Uh we would like to thank everybody for supporting the Marathon District Historical Society by visiting the museum over the years. Keep visiting, goodness, change is all going on there all the time. We thank the Town of Marathon for your pa- uh for your past support and hopefully we see their positive response to a funding request this this year.
Well, thank you very much for that. Uh I'd like to report, Jim, and I appreciate that. So if anybody has any question of the, to Collins? That, well, that's awesome. But I want to thank you again to thank you on behalf of council and administration because again, volunteers within the community make things happen and it's great to see and I I know she didn't ask for an increase in your request, so we'll consider that through the budget deliberations and uh we've always been a good working partner with the museum as well, so hope to continue that going forward twenty-five. Thanks.
I just add something to it. I just got the input today, but last month, we had left over eleven thousand views um on our webcam.
Oh wow.
It's uh it's sort of been going up and up every month. And so it is getting seen by a lot of people.
So so maybe when you come down to your presentation for Group of Seven, you can highlight that so that people at home can hear that. That's awesome. So we can uh Mr. Hatcher can maybe highlight that as well. So thanks for that. Thanks for your presentation, Mr. Collins, and uh encourage everybody to look at the wonderful community we have with the webcam. It's visiting mostly the lake. It's viewing the lake, correct? It manually operated.
A real quick, there, as part of the package that went to the town, that also had all the records for all for all our visitors in town there. So it's really fascinating. It's increased every year after starting in the twenty-three in twenty twenty-three. So it's really showing positive, positive stuff's going on. The people are there. Uh I know that I also, I get into it, but when I'm there, there's people walk in and I'm I'm also doing helping them with the tour, the park and all those guys with the tours, so.
No, I appreciate it very much. I think everybody in the community appreciates the fact that they look at the historical values of the community on that uh eighteen nineties, when you know the railroads going through the eighteen eighties. So uh there's a lot of history in our community, a lot of history going forward. So continue to bank that. I appreciate the work you do.
Yeah, it's interesting how certain things like Catherine Bastido had thought about that, the uh publication that they had for Dr. Bastido and they're saying they're bringing it in the valley. It's it's really interesting, some of the stuff that's getting nailed in there into the museum, so.
Cool. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I also have a personal uh story from the museum that an individual from my family reached out for from uh New Brunswick that I had no knowledge of, being a member of my family, looking for historical values of of Marathon. So that's pretty cool too, so.
Yeah, that was family summer, yeah.
Absolutely. So a lot of good connections made there as well.
You never know what you can find when you ask.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And up next, we have the Group of Seven. So I see Mr. Hatcher is here, so we can get right into that if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, administration. And we have our magical treasure behind me, so he can answer any of the tough questions.
Irene brought the stick for.
Hey.
I I wonder why you brought the stick?
Old hotel.
Okay.
Serena, you wanted hard copies.
So thank you and good afternoon, Bob, and uh look forward to your presentation on the Group of Seven Trail Committee.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for having us. We do appreciate all your past uh support. And basically, um I'm open for any questions anytime, of course, and and even available throughout the year for any questions. Um I'm basically just gonna read through the letter that we have that we submitted. But um mayor, council and administration should have our letter, our annual report and uh our budget for twenty twenty-four or our financials for twenty twenty-four and budget for twenty twenty-five. So I I hope you have all that. Um and we won't be able to get through the annual report, but there's some very interesting things in there that hopefully you'll get a chance to go through. Um so certainly, uh our request from the Group of Seven, my name is Bob Hatcher. I'm uh the president of the Group of Seven Lake Spirit Trails Association. This project started basically back in the Marathon Economic Days um about ten years ago. And uh we we as volunteers just carried that on. So um we continue to see, a- as Mr. Collins just mentioned, we continue to see more and more uh rise of interested people in the community. And and I'm hoping his numbers reflect back on the trail and and that we're responsible for some of his numbers that are up because certainly ours are up. I'll explain a few other things about our numbers i- in the future. Um we continue to see more tourism attraction based around the trail and we're rolling with great momentum into twenty twenty-five. Our trail crew continues to maintain all forty-two kilometers of trail in a first-class state. We have received many comments on how well our trail system is maintained. It's really reassuring to get emails and and texts and and contacts and say, boy, we're in Marathon and and we walked this trail and is it ever gone? You know, so aw- awesome to get those kinds of comments from people from out of town. We installed the new trailhead at Pebble Beach and the remaining signage panels will be installed this spring. We completed the work on the Queewas Canning Trail, clearing the outstanding two kilometers of storm damage and installing wavefinding signage. So the Queewas Canning Trail is from the mouth of the Pitt River to Aaron Bay. Originally, that started out as to be Big Tugon's Trail when Lismia Shadow was economic development there. And we started from Aaron Bay and continued on northwards. And now we're responsible for everything. So we take over. They had a major blowdown a couple of years ago and we couldn't get to all of that in one year, but it it is cleared out now. Even a couple volunteers from Southern Ontario came up with chainsaws. Um they're part of a trail crew down in Collingwood area. They came up and it it helped us out. So I mean, that kudos to to the to the trail system for having volunteers that come up from uh Southern Ontario with chainsaws and because most of our our young uh trail workers are not chain chainsaw certified. And certainly the blowdowns were chainsaw material. Um so it is what it is. We met with Big Tugon and will continue to meet to this this continuation of trail past thirty cold on to Coldwell. We need their busing to continue um to cross over um the sturdy cove and and to carry on over to Coldwell. So we got another meeting coming up this month with them. We built the staircase at Big Falls after a successful fundraising campaign. And we'll be installing the donation recognition treads this spring uh with the opening likely in May. And so you asked me what my board was, and these are the risers for the tread. So there's a stairway and a tread and the high school will be actually seeing, seeing uh the sponsorship's names on these. So as you're walking back up the stairway, you'll see sponsors and and trust me, Town of Marathon will be getting a major sponsorship out of it. But uh a half a tread was a hundred and twenty-five dollars, a full tread was two hundred and fifty dollars. This will all be taken care of by by the shop at uh the high school by Stephanie. Um Stefan, I should say. Um and so I just at the high school, by Stephanie, Stefan, I should say. And so I just thought I'd bring those just to show you what's happening. And so the staircase is, it's usable, certainly, but it's not complete yet. As to, we'll be installing these in the springtime, and Stefan and his crew will do what they want. Illegal highway crossing, oh, God, an illegal highway crossing, MTO, dealing with MTO. And hopefully you'll be an MPP shortly, and you'll be able to take care of the issues like that. We've been dealing with them for over three years, and they keep saying yes to us. But saying yes isn't like getting a piece of paper that says you can go ahead. When you're at a table with them and they're shaking their head, yeah, no problem, yeah, no problem, yeah. But getting on Darryl, I'm sure you're used to dealing with those kinds of issues. So that was a treat in itself. So illegal highway crossing will follow with signage, improved parking area, and trailhead installed. We know there's an issue there crossing the highway. That's just a physical issue we got to deal with. And there's not going to be any fancy parking lot with, I mean, it's just the nature of the beast. And to think that Big Falls is not part of Marathon. Indeed, it is part of Marathon. Most people who stop at the Big Falls to look at the falls, visitors, do pull into Marathon. And so I think whether it's 10 miles out or 12 miles out, I think we should consider Big Falls is part of Marathon. And it certainly is part of our trail system. So we completed the interpretive research for each painting site with Group of Seven experts, which will be informative, available in our interfap. And wait till you see that. That's going to be quite a treat for visitors. We continue to work with local businesses to develop Marathon as a trail town to capitalize on trail tourism. Most of you have heard me say that trails don't make money, but trail towns do make money. Whether you're in the restaurant, or the accommodations, or whether you're Canadian Tire, Home Hardware, Napa, whatever it may be, you're going to benefit from these folks coming to town, but mostly the hospitality industry, for sure. And back to the MAT tax, that's what we're hopefully going to generate on, is get more beds and bums and beds, and they'll have more people to be able to commit to the MAT tax. So we continue to work with local businesses to develop Marathon as a trail town to capitalize on the trail tourism. I think that's an important feature we have to recognize. We're seeing more artists arriving to solely paint for the Group of Seven Painters, and businesses are experiencing this as a growing industry market for Marathon and the trail. Exponential increase, as Mr. Collins related to in the museum, in the number of trail inquiries, increased interactions on our social channels, and the sheer number of visitors from all over North America to the museum and our office paints a picture of increasing interest and attraction in this project. And that's, his figures are showing that. We respectfully are requesting $100,000 from the Town of Marathon in 2025. With this investment, we will continue to maximize this amount by leveraging all funds, including a submission to Northern Ontario Heritage Fund, FedNOR, and staffing programs such as Canada Summer Jobs. We're also preparing an application to the Ontario Heritage Fund in the fall. And I saw in the last mercury, Mr. Mayor, with you beside Mr. Ford, that they've announced the new Rural Economic Development Program for $10 million here. We'll certainly be tapping into that. I haven't read the application yet, but hopefully we'll fall under the umbrella for that. We have a number of project elements we'll be focusing on in 2025, continued maintenance of the 42 kilometres. You can't just build a trail and leave it. That's the main thing. It has to be annually swept, gone over. And then when you get the high winds like we did at Quaywas Canning, you have to go in there with major equipment, major equipment being chainsaws at first, and do some cleaning. So that's from Marathon basically right through to Sturdy Cove right now, and Quaywas Canning in partnership with Beakdugon. Upbringing the parking lot at the Big Falls, the Big Creek with the highway signage and trailhead, installing remaining signage panels at trailhead at Pebble Beach, ready to launch our trail app, which is our interactive interpretive program for the trail and painting locations. So you'll actually build a pinpoint on your app and see where, which painter, whether it was Lauren Harris or one of the other ones, painted what picture, give the standard that location and view 100 years ago, and then view the actual thing where it is today. Continue to host various events, guiding hikes, painting glasses, tourism packages, local businesses, itinerary development, complete the feasibility study, and continue to implement that. Continue to work with Marathon area businesses to be ready to welcome trail visitors and continue to develop Marathon as a trail town. And some businesses may not realize what the implications this might be. So by the best we can, working again with places like the museum, where we, you know, we can, somebody might be passing through, and we get them to spend an extra night, buy a burger, buy a beer, and it all helps to the local economy. Refine our trail user count. So right now, we don't have a formal user count. We guess what we're at. When we were building the stairway, the trail crew and the contractor that was out there actually counted over 30. 30 people visited the trail, the falls, in one night. And I thought that was pretty amazing, that there's 30 people visited in one day. And so how do we capitalize on that? We bought three trail counters in the fall. They cost us $3,900. So you wonder where some of our money goes, like, three trail counters for $3,900. And I'm thinking like, my Lord, you got to be able to find something cheaper than that. But that's, that's what, that's the nature of the beast. That's what's out there. But they will be able to give us specific numbers, where we locate them, hopefully on strategic locations, and we'll have solid numbers for you folks by next year. Continue to develop alternate sources of revenue, this, like this type of thing. And every little bit helps for future trail operations. Continue to maximize all investments in our project by leveraging funding, and continue to plan and develop the connection from Marathon to Coldwell building, and build, we're completing from 2024. We're pleased to answer any questions. I might say, I'm pretty interested in this. In the annual report, we've got a segment in there that mentions that we're working now with the Lauren Harris people, and they've given us carte blanche on all of his paintings. Typically, you can't just use a painting from an original artist. You have to get licensed. It's totally humorous. They're very interested in site locations for each of the paintings, and we've offered to find those for them. I mean, it's like detective work, where you go in the bush, and you stand in one spot and say, yep, that's where they painted it. The Lauren Harris Foundation is very, very interested in that. And they're coming back to us with some awesome offers to help us out with that. So please get a chance to go through the annual report. We don't have time to do that today, but I think that's all, and we'll leave the rest for questioning.
Sure. Thank you very much for that report and inspiration, sure.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Another exciting thing was, on behalf of the Group of Seven, Kirsten Spence, our project coordinator, she attended in Ottawa, she attended a world trail conference, and she made a presentation on behalf of the trail, our trail association, the Group of Seven, to 400 of the delegates from 35 different countries. So I think it illustrates the fact that we're starting to get noticed. We're not just a little, a little volunteer group of board of directors. I mean, when you start going to Ottawa to do a presentation for 400 trail people from 35 different countries, that's kudos to us. So I think that, thanks, Don. I appreciate that. Thank you for that information. And thank you for the presentations. So ask council members if they have any questions.
Just a quick comment on my end. Congratulations to the Group of Seven Association, all your hard work that you guys have done as a group. Just one comment. It's been about 10 years that I feel like I've been having, listening to this presentation. It's the first time you didn't use your slogan, you know, you can build Wonderland, but you can't build what we have. So just want to make a quick comment and just more so, congratulations on all the hard work.
Yeah, that's a really good thought, because nobody can steal this plan from us. You know, you come up with a really good idea, whether it's tourism, or I don't care what it is, whether it's forestry or mining, or whatever it is, you come up with a great idea, and somebody says, oh, I'm going to patent that, or I'm going to take that away. Well, the Group of Seven were in our backyard. They're here. So again, yeah, you can build Disney, you can build Wonderland, but you can't build what we have in our backyard, right? And they can't take it away from us. We've got it. So. And it's really interesting how many artists, well, even the Lauren Harris Foundation, to be very interested in our little group, to say, we're going to help you with whatever we can. That's pretty, that's pretty awesome. Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Pass it to me.
Well, the, two questions. One is, you were talking about permission to go past Sturdy Cove. I assume that was from the mission of it?
Yes.
And what about the CP Rail? Like, is there going to be a conflict of moving west there?
We continue discussing with them. We try to reroute as much as we can. We thought we had an end with CP Rail, and we unfortunately don't hope. It's like dealing with the MTO, I guess. You know, it's just one of these ridiculous. It's, that's why a trail doesn't happen overnight. The old days, you just take a chainsaw and go in the bush and cut wherever you want. Those things don't do. Yeah, those things don't happen anymore. You know, you need permission from everybody, whether it's an indigenous group, or whether it's, you know, MTO, or CPR. We've got good rapport with CPR. We're very hopeful and optimistic. But we have to work through the, we have to grind through the administration. Yeah. And sitting at a table with them is the same thing as MTO. We get the nod, yep, yep, yep. But getting that piece of paper saying, yeah, we totally support the project and we're going to allow that. So, you know, it is what it is.
And the other question was about artists and residents. I remember a couple of years ago, you were offering programs in the summer, but there wasn't a good subscription to it. Is that still the case?
You know, I think on our end, it's just poor advertising and the subscription. I mean, we're just scratching the base of that with artists and residents. What we really would like to have is an artist who's going to teach something more like what they do at Pakasama, but rather than, you know, standing in their campers and coming out to an evening paint job, we'd like to have a professional artist that would actually teach, and the people would stay in Marathon, right? So accommodations and food again for everybody. So full-time artist courses is what we're looking at. Yeah.
Great. I think Mr.? Okay, well, thanks. Just, yeah, sorry. A couple of things further to that, David. So we do run two art courses a year, usually spring and fall, which are hosted by a local person here, a young artist.
Who is our foreman.
Has been our former manager as well. But he does this. And they've been fairly well, about 10 or 12 people have come out to the eastways here, as well as we've received emails from people who have found out about the Group of Seven Trail, have hiked it, and then have painted. They've come here to paint themselves. We haven't, you know, we need to, as Bob says, encourage this more on our social media, but we had a couple of emails from a lady in Edmonton, and I'm not sure where the other one was, that said they had a great time hiking and painting from the trail. Just a couple of things about the Group of Seven themselves. The Group of Seven is not just known in Canada. It's known throughout the world. One of Lauren Harris's paintings sold for over $12 million a couple of years ago. That's big in the art world, especially from Canada, you know? So it is, you know, our long-term hope, of course, that we get tourists from outside of Canada that are coming to hike these trails and see just what the Group of Seven saw in the 1920s.
Is that pictures of our area, or is it the?
I'm not sure which one it was.
It was still good.
Two years ago.
Absolutely. I have a couple of quick key questions.
Going back to the Mink Creek or Mink Falls project.
Yes, sir.
Installing a sign on the highway, is there also going to be some, like, marketing to advertise that?
Absolutely.
Because, like, spending all that money, we need those people to come into Marathon as well, right?
Yeah. Yeah, certainly. We're on Google, and that's where a lot of people are picking up notification that there is a trail in there. But certainly, we got to do a better marketing plan or advertising plan. Phil taught me the difference between marketing and advertising many years ago. So I guess we'll use the word advertising for now. So certainly, dressing up the parking lot, dressing up the signage, dressing up the entrance, you know, so people don't say, okay, what do I do? You get it on your car, where are you going now, right? So certainly that, and the stairway now. And so instead of going out after a rainy day at the Mink Creek, I don't know if anybody's challenged to do that. Going down is easy. Coming back up that slippery, slidy hill is quite the humorous task. So yes, we will be advertising that much better. And I mean, being on Google again is another feather in our hat, but certainly, yes, for sure.
Awesome. George. Bob, not to get into the business dealings of your group and stuff, but the decision to pursue Mink Creek over, say, the lagoon or something, how was that decision made for that location specific?
It's really quite easy. It's a connection to the trail. Yeah. So you know, if you go down, so we brushed that, we cleaned all that out also. So if you start at the highway, that trail goes all the way down to the hiking trail that goes across the coast.
And that was a decision based off connection with the trail? But was it like the executives who decided that? Was there political?
Board of directors decided, yeah, in conjunction with project manager coordinator, yes.
Yeah, it was a good, yeah.
Just wondered if there's any tickets left for the gala?
I don't know.
There's no commercial for you.
Thank you very much. And yes, the gala is on this Saturday, so there's only 50 tickets. Well, you know, so please come out and enjoy and dig deep into your pockets and help sponsor the mercury. Because that's a sponsor for the trail. So that's an annual event we have. Thank you very much. That's a good one, Dave.
So wrapping up, I think everybody's got their questions asked. I just wanted to go over your thinking. You know, the Big Falls was a consideration last year to be for council.
Yes.
And glad to hear that's a connecting point to the trail system. And the sign's been approved by the ministry. Now you're going to be, as councilor, identified, not only for the Big Falls itself, but the promotion of the community. And we're like, well, that can have a couple of coffee or soup, whatever.
Absolutely.
Of visiting the parts of the trail. That's a key point of that, visiting the other parts of the trail. Brookfield Place and Michael Gallery and Randy Van Stroll, all were a big part of the promotion of this back in 19. COVID hit, you know, weren't able to do. Has that ever been discussed and approved before?
No, unfortunately, since COVID hit. And I mean, we're still in contact with Randy Van Stroll. We're still in contact with Brookfield. But at this point, I mean, so we're still, I guess we're negotiating at best. But at this point, there is no big show that we're going to put on. We certainly would like to revitalize that. And I know Randy would definitely like to review, you know? I mean, that's his bread and butter. I mean, it's good for him and Brookfield, too. It's good for Brookfield. But, you know, thousands of people wander through that place. And so it's something we haven't, it's not on the back burner. It's something we want to keep hot.
Okay, just for the puff, I mean, it's been six years roughly, or as fast.
Exactly.
Brookfield Place is a connecting corridor from the path and Riverside, Ontario, in Toronto. So it's a very huge, like, a million people a day.
Corner, yes.
Always very huge. Very much so. So you talked a bit about the cabin container, hut to hut scenario. We had talked about that in the past. Is there a chance to FedNOR or Heritage Fund to go and get a couple, maybe one to start out with? We had talked about that offline with the container safe system, where it's already developed, built, other contractor brings it and lands it on the site, puts it on a brick, and away you go.
We're really hoping that the Wengi and Okama will come through on that one for us. You know, we've applied and got some money from them in the past. It's kind of, well, all money is appreciated, of course. But, you know, we're hoping that Wengi and Okama is our target for the first, the first one or two, even if we start with black forms and tents, you know? We could call it clamping at this point. If we can't build the cost of a cabin, why can't we put up a couple wooden black forms with tents on them? So we're looking, I'll be doing an MOU on that, and we'll see where we can go with that this year. So please, we had a discussion like yourself. Take a look at the container system, because you can pick up a really good one-bedroom container system for bombing tank, right? Yeah.
So that's a good investment. And you're sitting beside the newly appointed board member for the Town of Marathon, the Wengi and Okama Coors Corporation. So, ooh, it's on his ear, maybe you can get some help.
Back there?
So with that being said, one other thing.
Well, I got to put, I got to put the knife in there, because we haven't had an easy time with that. I don't know whether we. I, I don't know whether we.
I don't know what Mr. Cortez got to spot, but he's.
I'll be sure to be visiting, yeah. Thank you very much.
So one other thing before we wrap up, you talked a bit about the, the trail identifying system that you have, the trail counter.
Yes.
You know, the trail cameras, a couple hundred bucks. And the system that you send back the information back to the main motherboard, is that, is that something you can look into? Is that an opportunity?
So these are not trail cameras.
I know, I know, they're trail counters.
They're counters.
But this, I'm talking about a trail camp put up on a tree.
Yep.
Except somebody come by the, and then puts the recording back into main motherboard, so.
Yeah.
I don't know.
A little bit more sophisticated. Yeah, and I haven't seen it, yeah.
Okay, but a little bit more sophisticated, these, this is.
Yeah.
So Parkers, Parkers National Park counts all the curb with the trail camp, so.
Yeah, there you go.
I thought I'd get that.
I dropped my jaw on there and the price of these, but it's vitally important that we have this task to, to share them with everybody. You know, whether it's you folks or funding agencies like, you know, NOHFC or, or Nwenjir Okama. It's vitally important we have solid statistics showing that, look at, look at the traffic grabbing.
And I think we'd probably get more visitors on the trail than there are here at Google on those camps. Thank you very much. So once again, thank you very much for all the hard work you're doing as you go last week. Once and since we're getting the full ask, yeah, we had budget constraints and we know different this year, we'll look at all the groups that presented today and not. And any dollars that we can provide to your organization and any of the board organization, we're fully supportive of that. We wanna make sure we assist everybody in our community as best we can. But we're also under constraints in regards to our budgets and the inflationary values. And, you know, the big thing for the Town of Marathon right now is the ELC. We're working very hard behind the scenes, that's a $77 million bill. We've committed $2.9 million in our, our budget this year for the pre-preminary, you know, information that we need to gather. You know, the engineering studies and the land prep and all that stuff that comes before you put a tender up. That is a huge commitment for this, so we have to take that into consideration as well. But I, I just wanna thank, on behalf of council, the opportunity to thank all of you that present today, because you're all huge volunteers, the community, and make the community a place, a better place for all of us to work with and live in place.
Just one more thing about the council contribution, that provides us to leverage all these initial funds through Fednor, et cetera.
Yeah, without the towns' dollar, we don't leverage anybody. You know, you, you know, typically, it's a one-third, one-third, one-third type of thing. So I mean, the town is so vital in, in our project and we do appreciate that. And, and we appreciate every, every, every nickel that the, the town gives us. I mean, but we do not just, just take that dollar, we certainly leverage that to, to carry on, yeah.
Absolutely. I'd like to say to all the groups today that you can leave here with the fact you're gonna get all you want to ask for, but I can't do it, we have to have deliberations and see where we are with the, the budget process, as you heard at the onset of this meeting, we're looking at a five to six percent increase in status quo of the budget. Like this is the, the first track in our council in three years, there's, there's literally nothing in the capital budget. We're replacing almost nothing this year, we're just maintaining what we have. And if it's something that had to be replaced, we put it in, but it's very minimal, like I'm talking like, uh, uh, nothing.
Well, once we get a representative in the Ontario government, we might be able to.
We'll see about that. Thank you very much. And thank you all for coming today, taking your time and making your presentations. So we'll have a maybe a 10-minute break.
Yeah, just, just before we break, your worship, not in the presentation schedule, but for, for council and the public's information. We did receive two additional written requests, which I have forwarded to council. One was from the Marathon Community Collective, which of course supports our local food bank for $15,000, as well as a request from the Marathon Special Olympics Committee for $2,500 to support our local audience, or participate in Special Olympics. Those are not on the schedule, but have been forwarded to council.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We'll take a 10-minute break and we'll come back, 10 minutes, five minutes, five minutes. Councilor will be attending at 1:30, so we'll come back at 20 after or so, so for the public, well, 25 after, thank you. Bob, I can just pause that.